Every month I just wait for, I mean like a program, you know. They have, okay, I lose internet for thirty percent of the month, I'm gonna send you thirty percent less money. I am not even ready to go.
We're good, thank you.
I'm curious, what seems to be the problem?
Here?
Call meeting to order. Carla, would you take the role and establish a court, please?
Sankey?
Here.
Moreland?
Here.
Sherman?
Here.
Fossett?
Here.
Embry?
Here.
You have a court.
Thank you, Carla. Uh, the first order of business is to approve the minutes of our April twelfth meeting. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes? Any comments?
I have, I have one correction, I think, um, if I was reading it correctly, I think, I gotta open it here. On page three of five for the April twelfth meeting, line nine. I believe it says underwriting, and I think it's supposed to mean underlying.
Oh, yes. Underlying.
That's all I saw for corrections.
I have one. On line twenty-nine, it says, "A brief discussion followed regarding Embry's participation in the vote." But I thought it should be clarified that participation in the vote for a period of minutes.
Carla, do you mind adding that?
Okay.
As a clarification.
No problem.
So I have a motion to approve the minutes as corrected?
Sure.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as amended. Are there, is there any further discussion? Carla, would you take the role, please?
Sankey?
Aye.
Moreland?
Aye.
Sherman?
Aye.
Fossett?
Aye.
Embry?
Aye.
Uh, the next order of business is public hearing for case file number two dash CU dash PC dash twenty-three. Applicant is the city of Depot Bay. It's a conditional use permit. Uh, located at two twelve southwest, South Point Street here in Depot Bay. I will now read, uh, the, uh, process for a quasi judicial public hearing. We will now open the public hearing for case file number two dash CU dash PC dash twenty-three. The applicant is the city of Depot Bay. The following statement will apply to, uh, the process at tonight's meeting. The testimony and evidence must be directed toward the code section and citations and criteria described by the Depot Bay staff report or other criteria in the code the party believes could apply to the subject request. The failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the commission and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the state land use board of appeals on that issue. Application materials and other evidence relied upon by the applicant have been provided to the city and have been made available to the public. The procedure for tonight's hearing will be as follows. First, there will be a staff report. The applicant will present testimony. There will be testimony from those in favor of the application. There will be testimony from those in opposite, opposition to the application. There will be rebuttal from the applicant. I will then ask if there is anyone who would request that the record remain open for final additional written testimony. If none, the public hearing will be closed. The commission will deliberate and make a decision. There will be no further input from the public during deliberations. Are there any ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest, or bias of commissioners regarding the hearing before us? Is there any opposition to any member on the commission hearing this case by the commissioners or the public? Would the planner give his report, please?
Certainly.
Thank you.
So as mentioned, the, the application before this evening is a conditional use permit, uh, for a twelve, uh, twelve hundred ninety-six square foot, eighteen and a half foot tall pole barn at the city's wastewater treatment plant. Property is located at two twelve southwest South Point Street, and it's worth three point three six acres in its own R one. The site is surrounded by homes in the South Point neighborhood and a Little Well Cove planned development. It's developed with buildings, equipment, and other improvements that are related to the wastewater treatment plant. And there's also a probable wetland area identified in the southwest of the corner of the property uh, in the city's inventory and assessment of natural resources. Notice of tonight's hearing was mailed to the property areas within a two hundred and fifty foot radius of the property on April nineteenth and published in the New York Times on April twenty-first. No written testimony was received, but staff did receive a call from a nearby neighbor asking for clarification of how access to the new building will be provided. Property is subject to the R one zone development standards, and proposed building will comply with these standards. A minimum twenty foot setback is required from the north property line. Staff recommends requiring the preparation of a site plan to confirm compliance with this setback prior to building for additions. As mentioned, the property includes a probable wetland area at its southwest of the corner. Construction will not occur within this area of the site. The zoning ordinance establishes protection standards within where a paring corridor boundaries, which are defined as extending fifty feet from the edge of a wetland. Staff therefore recommends the preparation of this site plan as I've mentioned, that it also be hit, uh, compliance of the proposed structure with the fifty foot repairing corridor setback. And again, that site plan, site plan will be prepared prior to building for additions. The wastewater treatment plant and associated facilities are, is a conditional use in the R one zone. The zoning ordinance also establishes specific standards, uh, CUP standards for public facilities. Uh, one of these standards deals with visual screening, as discussed in the report this evening. There is some existing, um, vegetation and fencing along, uh, along the backs of the applying residences that provides a level of visual screening. Um, there has been some foliage removed in the area where the building is meant to be placed, and so staff is recommending the, uh, inclusion of some additional landscape screening between the building and the nearest towns in order to help screen the building from view from those properties. Um, otherwise, uh, standard conditions that are recommended this evening deal with the preparation of an erosion control plan and also the standard condition, uh, dealing with any inadvertent discovery of archaeological resources during construction. And that concludes staff's presentation. We recommend approval of the reflected conditional use permit certain to the conditions described in the report this evening. And Brady is here on behalf of the Public Works Department. Um, I think Tracy, do you have any questions about what's being proposed?
Does anybody have questions for Kim?
I just have a point of information. Uh, Kit, can you tell me, uh, what is the land immediately south of that and into the east of the enclosed area where the sewer plant is? Is that part of Little Well Cove?
Yes, it's common area.
That's common area for Little Well Cove, that?
Yes.
Up to their borderline?
Yeah, yeah. There's utility, uh, right away through there.
Okay, and then Track D is a, you have a separate
Is separate.
entity within that
Yes.
area.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Is it typical that wastewater treatment plants are in like an R one zone, or is that unusual? That, uh, it seems like every every construction they wanna do would have to require conditional use?
Um, I, I
It was there?
Yeah, it was there before the city incorporated, I believe.
Yeah, it was there, and then they, and then they designed the neighborhoods around the wastewater. So, it's just kind of way on full, they, they developed South Point Street with a developer, um, Sunset or, or it's like Cutler. And then, uh, Carlson developed Little Well Cove, so it just kinda everybody built around it, and I think that's where they, after Sears Incorporated, they created the, uh, the zoning.
Do you know when the wastewater treatment plants was?
It was originally in, in nineteen seventy-four, and then it was remodeled in two thousand and three. To where it just never put the add-on to them.
And there is no zoning for like public use, or?
Um, no, we don't, we have a, we have a public facility zone, uh, in the zoning ordinance, but I, I think it's mostly applied to parks. Um, and not to utility facilities, because I think, I believe, the similar situation with the water treatment plant actually is also residentially done in R five or R four.
Right.
And my experience in California is typically something like this would have been designated a public, quasi-public or public utility or something like that. It wouldn't be designated residential, because that's just the way things that, that I worked in before, but.
Yeah, it's just, it's, it just seems strange to me, but. I, uh, and they picked the water quality facility site for what reason?
It worked, was built, but I think because of the discharge permit, um, where we had, we couldn't have it in the bay, um, at the time, from what I understand, and, and the South Point Rocky Headlands were the discharge. So that created that area, um, where the wastewater plant is, uh, because it just, uh, it was located, correct, yeah.
It goes down south.
It, yeah, discharge permit goes out South Point and then all the way down Cardinal, and then discharges in the ocean in a diffuser, um, offshore, a few years ago. And it's, uh, Rocky Headland, but it wasn't in considered in the bay area, because Depot Bay is, that's considered Depot Bay, and then Depot Bay Harbor inside, so that, between North Point and South Point, um, is considered Depot Bay.
Yeah.
And then in the harbor, so we couldn't discharge in the bay.
A lot of people think the harbor is the bay.
Yeah, yeah.
Brady? So it sounds like you are able to comply with that fifty foot recurring
Yeah, we're gonna be, yeah, there's some, there's plenty of drainage in there, and, uh, there's a lot of, uh, brush and, um, olders growing in that now. Uh, there's some, in the, we get a lot of frogs and some cabbage grows through there, but that, that's gonna stay.
And there won't, there won't be like any construction debris or any?
No, we're gonna, we're trying to keep that clear now. What we're trying to do is put what equipment we have to store outside, because we don't have room, is to put it under that new building to keep it out of the rain, it's kind of for equipment and, and, uh, influence.
And I'm kind of surprised that there wasn't some comment between neighbors, because, but that, the new building at eighteen feet is probably not higher than the current one?
No, the other one's like quite high. I can't remember the height, but it's like twenty six, twenty seven. The, the, the pole barn is there.
Might be a little far. I'm just telling you how they fly, I was prepared.
Twenty-six, twenty-eight, twenty-six, twenty-eight, I think.
Because they're close neighbors.
Yeah. Yeah, but as I said, other than the, other than the, um, the one phone call I had was a question about access. I didn't have any other?
Yeah, I think they were concerned if we were gonna put another road in or something, or, or drive, uh, drive the access.
Um, I'm looking at their report. This was in twenty-ten, the other building was put up. Yeah. It is shown as a twenty-eight feet tall.
Okay.
Yeah, so this will be about ten feet shorter than that, okay?
Is there room for future expansion of the wastewater treatment?
There is room for another, uh, we call them a donate plant, or RAM, they have clarifiers in the center and digestors around the side. Um, there is room for that, along with this building, so we still have room. We did measure that radius, and still staying out of that other area. It would be a little bit close to the, uh, last, uh, addition we did, and it may be s, a bit smaller. But, um, with the, uh, um, elimination of the flow from Glenn Eden, that is possible. I mean, we've already given them their notice, but if the flows are cut fifty-six percent, um, we'll, we'll have plenty of room for forty years with the urban growth boundaries Depot Bay currently has. So, that, that for kind of fifty percent, fifty-six percent of the flow will be removed, so there's all that extra, so what's coming? Yeah, I don't think we'd have, we don't have enough room to ever recover what flows we're currently getting. If we stay the size we are, you know, we could probably still take on, um, other developments such as, well, obviously, it's the hills, but like where Kalani is, Big Little Code. Um, I'm sure that's all gonna eventually be, um, within the window of, of the, uh, remove, say, the, 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 elimination of, because they're gonna build their own plant, they've already got plans and trying to build their own facility. So, yeah, there is, there is room to to grow there if we need to, but in the way technology is and, uh, efficiency for wastewater treatment, uh, sometimes you don't have to expand it more, and we'll just get some more current, uh, data treatment systems.
Does the applicant want to give any further testimony?
No, I think, no, um, no, I think it was, yeah.
Don't feel that you need to. Uh, is there, uh, any testimony from those in favor of the application? Testimony from those opposed to the application? Brady, any rebuttal? Is there anyone who requests that the record remain open for final additional written testimony? Hearing no such request, the public hearing is closed. The commission will deliberate and make a decision. There will be no further input from the public during deliberation.
Um, I for one appreciate, uh, Kit's thoroughness in specifying the utilities serving the subject property. The city sewer service serves the city sewer plant. So if that building is plumbed, it'll be the shortest drainpipe ever.
Direct deposit.
Any other comments? Questions? If not, is there a motion?
I move that we approve.
Same.
It's been moved and seconded, uh, that we approve the application. Is there any further discussion? If not, Carla, would you call the role, please?
Moreland?
Aye.
Sherman?
Aye.
Fossett?
Aye.
Embry?
Aye.
Sankey?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for coming, Brady.
Sure, you're welcome.
You can go if you'd like, but don't keep the internet with you.
Yeah.
Oh, I, um, I'm just about to start working, yeah. Started working when I got here, so maybe you'd like?
Just before, just, yeah.
Thanks for explaining.
Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
The next item in this new business, first on the agenda, is the discussion of quality of life code amendment contents.
Thank you. So, um, as the commission will recall, you had your joint meeting with the council back in January, there was, uh, support for, um, bringing forth a kind of a miscellaneous code amendment that addresses a number of kind of quality of life issues, particularly in the residential areas of the city. So some of the topics that were identified at that point, you know, we plan to bring forward are, um, uh, standards for exterior residential lighting, uh, possibly include implementation of dark skies ordinance provision. Uh, landscaping and tree standards for our residential noise standards in residential zones, particularly with respect to, um, the council's government and other fixed sources of noise that are currently activated by the, by the So those are the, the assumptions that we started with after the meeting in, uh, in January. Um, recently, the council, um, was considering, uh, some issues related to complaints about atrium signs, and the president was at the, the meeting that we had discussed. And, uh, the council endorsed, um, uh, having the planning commission pursue an amendment to the, you know, the test amendment that would prohibit, um, atrium banner and feather signs in non-residential zones. Um, so staff would, um, suggest that if we're going to be pursuing a kind of an omnibus, um, code amendment, oh, nobody's there, oh. Yes, and, um, if we're gonna be pursuing an omnibus kind of, uh, code amendment, uh, that that would be another item that could be included in quality of life, uh, which kind of, which I think makes sense. Um, given the concerns that the, the council expressed for, but particularly the atrium signs and and the feather signs have a tendency to contribute to visual clutter, uh, in the commercial strip and, and also either pedestrian access, um, particularly in some intersections. So, um, we would recommend including that within the scope of the, of the code amendments. Um, another issue that I mentioned in the report is something that, that is brought to my attention. Um, I met a couple of, uh, conferences that I've attended, night conferences both here in Portland and California. Is the, the use of the term grandfather, grandfather in, in zoning regulations, um, as it relates, and in the context of zoning regulations, it's headed to, to address issues of non-conforming uses of structures where, um, whereby, you know, a structure that's rendered non-conforming as a result of some change in the code is, is allowed to continue, to persist in some fashion, be maintained and what have you. You know, no other applied code, uh, requirements. Um, so something I wasn't aware of, but I've learned in, in the last couple of years is that the, the, the origin of the term grandfather, you know, grandfather clause, um, came about when statutes that were enacted after the Civil War. Um, and they were basically an attempt to prevent African-American citizens from voting, um, by imposing, um, requirements such as literacy, literacy tests and poll taxes on, on those citizens. And so, um, there's definitely kind of a charge of racial, um, uh, origin that relates back to, to term grandfathering that I think most people aren't aware of. But it is something that is perhaps not the best thing to be including in, in, in the city's official legal documents. Um, so there are, I think only a few instances, I think three or four that I've found where the word is used. And I've seen, uh, some other jurisdictions use the term legacy or other terms to replace that. So we would suggest, uh, again, a code amendment that identifies where that word is in the, the ordinance and replacing it with a, another word that the council can agree or the commission can agree on is more suitable, um, but still conveys the meaning of that I described, or being, uh, uh, the, the context of not performing uses, they're allowed to continue. So that's kind of the scope of what staff has in mind right now. Um, if there are other suggestions for topics from the commission, we would greatly appreciate those. Um, we can certainly discuss those this evening, but my, my thought is then once we've kind of come up with a list, is to begin discussing one topic at each meeting as we go forward. My thought was to start with the exterior lighting standards. At next month, we would present some draft language and some background materials, and we would probably borrow from other jurisdictions, as we often do. And come up with some, uh, some proposals for language that we might include in the code that we can discuss. And, uh, get some feedback on, and then ideally bring another topic back each, that's also located, so hopefully by the fall, we'll have, um, a set of proposed regulations that we can, that the commission can consider, and then put it into the form of the draft ordinance. Can go through the process, like what we just did with the townhouse regulation. Um, so that, that's really my presentation, so I just wanted to see if there was any input from the commission on other topics that you wanted to include that, that staff hadn't already identified or that I mentioned in the report this evening.
We had previously talked about, uh, charging stations for electric vehicles. Parking. Um, I don't know that there's anything we can do about it, but I feel some obligation to try to get some public input on traffic safety issues. I see that it came up at, uh, a recent city council meeting, people were talking about. Uh, even with, even with the police presence that we now have, people are still zipping through town.
Yeah, I think difficulty with, the difficulty with that is it's, 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 it's very difficult to to regulate that type of activity through zoning.
Yes.
It's, it's, it's more of a matter of law enforcement and, and more within jurisdiction review of, of the sheriff's department, their contract and public safety. Um, there may be, there may be things to be looked at, um, that that might be related to public safety, but again, when we're talking about, uh, we're talking probably about, um, traffic control, uh, implementing measures, um, that follow in the, the public rights of way, or O G A's private way particularly. Um, there, there may be jurisdiction, I think, and, and probably limited effectiveness that, that, that the that any kind of zoning regulations we have, but we can, if, if, you know, if the commission thinks of something specific along those lines, it's certainly, you know, bring it forward, and we can kind of see whether it's, it seems feasible or not. But I'd forgotten about the charging infrastructure, so thank you for that reminder, I will include that in those. And I just, I just happened to see, um, related but not related, um, driving things from Newport the last couple of days. There is a Tesla supercharging station going in at the, um, the shopping center where the Safeway is. Uh, eight charging stations right along Highway one and one across from, uh, where Central Lincoln Plaza offices are, and they're on, on, uh, Coast Island in Newport.
They look like dominos.
They do.
I'm tempted.
I, I didn't know what it was, and then suddenly they put up the vertical part of it yesterday, and it's like, oh, okay.
Yeah, they got one of those up the, big, up at the Elton Mall in Lincoln City, they're behind the mall, there's
Oh, yes.
the big Tesla one there, and it, I don't know, they always, they're always, I, I always get, well, this is just my two cents, I always get peeved because they always hire out of town contractors to do it, and we're all sitting down, hello?
Yeah.
But, you know, it is what it is.
Yeah. So anyways, thank, thank you for reminding me of that, I had forgotten about that, so we'll, I will sure include that, but we'll figure out where, slip that in.
Other items?
So, well, I don't have other items, yeah, but the ones that we've talked about so far on this document are things that we currently don't have standards for. Is that right, or?
Yes, or we, or we have, or we have, we have some standards, um, like for exterior lighting, there's, there is some limited language in the code about exterior lighting, but it only applies in commercial zones. There's nothing in residential zones that, you know, your neighbor has a light or that shines into your bedroom window, that's, it's not a code, but it's not a violation of the code, there's no regulation. Um, and other jurisdictions I've worked in have established, you know, things like maximum number of exterior fixtures or maximum lumens for exterior fixtures and those types of things, and and requirements for fixtures to have, um, downcast or shielded, you know, lighting, so that it's not flashing out light in all directions. So those are kind of the types of things in other jurisdictions.
Um, regard, I think the lighting one is great, I think that's a good one that we start with. Um, I get people hire me to put in all sorts of crazy exterior light fixtures, and many of which personally I would be opposed to, but, you know, I mean, they're paying me to do it, so I do it, but. One thing that, um, I think if, if we're discussing the lighting, or if we agree to discuss the lighting thing next month, at next month's meeting, um, I think some of the things we should think about between now and then are, are, you know, like the existing amendments we, we have, whatever they are, um, beefing up, um, up for like shrouding or, you know, light level at the perimeter of the property, that sort of big humans. Um, but we, I think we do also need to accommodate to some extent security lighting, especially in like commercial zones, like, like, you know, we got a bank at the north end of town, they have to have a certain amount of light around, like the ATM and stuff, right? Um, and one thing personally, this is just my personal thing. Um, I would love to ban ocean spotlights. I think those are ridiculous and, uh,
Can it, would it, would we be able to impact, uh, spotlights that already exist?
I can't.
Probably.
There would be, uh, there would be, uh, rendered non-conforming, there would be.
So they would, they would be legacy items?
Yeah, there would actually be, and, and
So many Little Well Cove.
Yeah.
However, they never are used, they're there, but.
I think they're more of a pile of rust now, the ones I've seen.
Some of them are, yeah, they've been there so long.
Ones that are still operating, I mean, they're good.
But there's, there's one that, there's at least one that is.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're bedded right into the rock.
Yeah.
In fact, there's so many.
I think it's, it's worth, it's worth looking into, I mean, the worst that's gonna happen is that the council's not gonna pass it forward, or there'd be, there'd be opposition, but, uh, yeah, certainly, you know, if you, if you adopt any kind of standard that it renders, um, something like lighting or any of these other issues, you know, non-conforming, then we could also consider like including language in the code that talks about amortization of those.
Oh, that would be another line.
So whether, so maybe giving, like, when it, when it finally fails, you don't
Yeah.
or, or five years, five years, ten years, something like that, every certain period of time, they have to be removed, if they are, if they don't just fail or something, or, you know, involved early before them. So that's also the case with the, like, sign or, the signs are, are rather non-conforming, that they, they have to be amortized within a certain period of time.
What about street lighting?
Um, well, yeah, street lighting is, is more of, it's in a public right of way. Uh, I suppose if it's about private streets, it, there'd be more control over it. Um, but it typically would I think it typically would, no, we could look at what region it would be addressed, street lights in, in, um, in the zoning ordinance, we might be able to, we might be able to In zoning ordinance, we might be able to, we might be able to at least address street lighting. Within the context of subdivisions, where you've got larger. You've got larger developments that are gonna have, you know, lots of streets and and lights and whatever you're going in, I don't know.
I'm across. The intersection from the bank. And the street light is is at my intersection. I put in black hot shades in the bedroom that's next to it so that so that people can sleep, but. I assume it was there for security, just. Or, you know, I don't, I don't, it never turns off at night, so.
Right.
Anytime at night, and I don't know. If it was security for the bank, if it was what it was originally.
Yeah.
I'm gonna suggest that if you wanna look for a good model, to go to Flagstaff, Arizona.
They have dark skies.
They have them excellent because of the observatory there.
Oh, yeah.
The whole city, they, the whole city have, used to have downward lighting. And they have all kinds of streets and banks and, or even they, they figured out a way to comply with. Uh, with it, with that. Because they, they have, they have to have all downward lighting. And they've been able to solve the problem, so I I would suggest that might be a a model to look at how they worded it. Because it applies to the whole city, downtown, I mean, the whole thing.
Yeah, and and I believe, I I believe the GAHs has adopted dark skies, I believe the GAHs has adopted dark skies language in their codes, all of them with that as well.
And there probably are other. Places too, you know.
I, yeah, I'm sure.
There are observatories.
I'm sure that, I I know that there's a, there's a website for dark skies, and I'm sure that they can point, uh, we can get information about other jurisdictions and and. Model code language and that type of thing, so anyway. You got that thing.
I would think there'd be kind of exception for downtown because there's still gonna be people walking around in January when the. Four thirty gets sundown, you know, I mean. For safety, you would think you would need some degree of lighting. Uh, in the downtown zone.
Yeah, but you should still solve that with downward lighting, i- if it's fine care of it.
Yeah.
When the street light next to my house is downward, but it's. Gets a broad area.
Right.
And I don't know whether it's solved by, you know, elevation of lights, I mean, to some extent it's controlled by that too, but they're not stuck way up in the air and they're down much closer.
I think.
They still can provide good security.
Right, I think it's a co- it's a common, it's a combination of of factors, how high the luminaires on the ground and and how, and the more. You know, the more energy efficient, the more high-tech. Illumination systems these days, I think, can provide more focused light rather than more diffuse light, so you can. You have a downcast light, it's just going down, it's not going out.
So the the sodium lights, the orange ones, I think. Still, we've still got a number of those orange sodium lights out there, and those just, yeah, those just have a pretty big cone. But with the LEDs now, if if and when they eventually upgrade these, they, those can be, they can even make them so they shine straight down one direction and broadcast that way or vice versa, there's all sorts of real little. Refraction app that you could put in them.
It's almost like a sprinkler, you can kind of aim it where you want it to go.
Yeah, yeah.
And it would save a lot of electricity too.
That too, that too. We can install like five in that gym's place.
That would be the test site.
I got that.
He's used to it.
Just go repair that spotlight, don't be kidding me.
The landscaping standards. I guess my feeling is, I think native planting should be encouraged but not required. And I am not opposed to. Banned list of invasive species. But I. I just think that. To some extent, there's, there's other species that might do well in people's yards that that. You know, shouldn't be banned, that they, that are outlawed, and. And there's lots of places, I keep going back to Hawaii again, but. You know, there's a lot of flowers in Hawaii now that that wouldn't, Hawaii wouldn't live like it looks like if they if they didn't import them. Some of the, some of the species like the proteas are highly desirable, they're from South Africa, but anyway, just my thoughts.
I I agree that I don't think banning. Any particular plants other than perhaps a list of invasive stuff, those are, those are the worst offenders, so I'd I'd be a part of that.
I've been fighting English I B and MacGrave so long.
Yeah, same, is there any, I I think the council may be having some conversations or on these lines dealing with. Public property in variety ways, are any thoughts about tree. Preservation standards or, we currently, the code currently has language in it. There's a chapter that, and we talked about this before a couple of projects, that deals with. Pre-development activity, like when someone's going to start clearing a site, you know, for developments. And there's language in it that talks about trees of over a certain caliber, of over sixty inches in diameter, or more than a certain. Feet above the ground are supposed to try to maintain or keep up this twenty percent of those. But the the threshold for that is a pretty large acreage, I think it's one or two acreage site before that. Applies, and so we don't, we don't currently have that kind of standard trying to preserve trees on smaller residential lots, so. I don't know whether there's interest in the commission's part in trying to maybe. Impose that type of a standard to try to encourage people who are like, maybe who are developing, say undeveloped wooded lots. Smaller ones, to try to preserve as many of the mature trees as they can or not, or or just kind of throwing that out there as a. Something I've heard, you know, in kind of the community that there seems to be some support for maybe some opposition here as well.
And my thoughts on that is. To some degree for safety, you want to clear around the house a little bit. Uh, not just for fire, but also tree fall. It's been my observation that the. Sorpines. Can grow very tall spindly and and they. They tend to fall over before the the branches break, the branch is so giving that those trees just couldn't fall, I've been hit by two of them so far. And, you know, this, but the spruce trees are very strong trunks. They don't tend to fall over, they can be self-pruning because the branches break off before the tree starts to sway very much. So it's, it's very. You know, I think it's the type of tree and and, you know, you you can't, I don't think you can take away the buildable area of the lot. Cause then you're creating more setbacks, which I think creates problems.
Yeah.
I'd like to, I would like to see something for. The sturdier trees being, you know, something that would protect them, because I can tell you that. The city came in and cleared the lot adjacent to mine. And the garage started falling down because there was nothing there to keep the soil in place anymore. And I, and that I think is is an issue for erosion controls, is being able to maintain those big trees.
So I I've heard the term heritage tree kind of fanny about, is there, I think everybody's coming up with a definition.
A definition of a heritage tree? If there is such a thing, or you can make one up.
Oh, yeah, we can see if there was a definition out there or.
I'm I'm sure that there are communities that have a definition of of something similar to a heritage tree.
But I appreciate bringing up the erosion control, because like, that's another factor with tree removal is to, you know, all the steep slopes that have been skied and picked up. Lots are, they're kind, that does have protection, so. Plus erosion problems for gas, so.
And the roots of the trees can. Can improve stability for the upper, you know, few feet of soils quite good, they also. Drink quite a bit of water.
Yeah.
Suck up quite a bit of water, surprising how much they use.
Any thoughts on noise?
Do we not have any sort of noise ordinance right now or anything?
We have a noise ordinance, it's not in the zoning, it's not in the zoning ordinance, it's not in that part of the code, it's in the nuisance chapter.
Okay.
Um, and it's really, and and when we get to that, I'll put it back and bring it back and to see what it is. But it's really focused more on nuisance noises and things like parties and vehicles and, you know, people yelling and screaming. That, it's not, it's really not focused on a base point, noise sources. And again, the the communities that I've worked in in the past. There have been, we've had standards to deal with things like air conditioning, window air conditioning, air conditioning compressors. But that are often there, in in these, my experience, will also would often be put like to the side yard.
Yeah.
So that they're close to the home next door. Pool equipment, we don't have pools much here, but they're in Southern California, but.
Water conditioners.
Yeah, water conditioners, but but there are, you know, any type, any type of similar, you know, mechanical equipment that's outside of a building that might. Tend to create a a a noise impact for an adjacent. Neighbor, we have, there are, in cities I work for, we have a standard that the equipment had to be rated so that it didn't generate noise in excess of. I think it was like fifty-five decibels during the day, forty-five decibels at night, measured at the property line. So that could be something, another thing that we had, when we, when the commission looked at the pump station proposal that. Well watched Deepwater Hills is that there was no criteria there in terms of the noise that might be generated by those pumps, and so the commission had to kind of come up with a number. On the fly when we were here at that meeting, but we can certainly try to look at at finding what inappropriate. Noise level is for that type of thing, so when you have, particularly when you have something like a a conditional type of use that's going into a residential area like a utility facility. There can be some type of standard in the code, this is the maximum acceptable noise level, up again measured at the property line. That that doesn't exist in the code right now.
Would would construction work fall under the existing nuisance ordinance, or would that be potentially under like a, you know, meaning?
I, I think that the, or I think there is, I'll double check, I think that there's language in the current noise ordinance that talks about days and hours for construction. Okay, but that is something I've seen in other codes.
That is in there.
Yeah, so that is, that is one.
That is in there.
Okay, so that's good.
Yeah. But, yeah, a lot of the other stuff is just like loud radios, loud vehicles, people yelling.
Yeah.
That.
The rules that we came up with for Deepwater Hills, I thought were reasonable. For that pump station?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I think.
And then, you know. If it comes to, I've seen other noise artists like Washington County. Where it just says. If it's the amount of noise that bothers a reasonable person, there's something to that effect.
Yeah.
I mean.
A reasonable person.
Yeah, they're making it into the, it's about what constitutes a reasonable person.
Yeah. I mean. That's a more difficult one.
There's, yeah, there's, there's pros and cons, there are, and there are communities that that use that more, that kind of reasonable person standard rather than an absolute. Than a decibel level standard, and there's, there's pros and cons to both, I mean, a reasonable person standard is more flexible, you know. User's got an absolute number, but that can be a problem, having an absolute number is great, it's about a number, but then. Being able to enforce that number and having the equipment that that measures it properly and is calibrated, so. If worse than the worst, if somebody, you know, quite a challenge. In a court of law, whether, you know, somebody was exceeding the noise level, you know, they'd have to be able to demonstrate that the the person doing stuff, who was using the noise meter was properly trained to use it. And it was properly calibrated and all those types of things, so, it's kind of like, it's kind of like, you know, radar guns with with speed enforcement, that people will always try to challenge that by saying that. They're being, they wasn't, they were properly trained, or the radar gun wasn't properly calibrated, and that kind of thing, so it's all, there's. Pros and cons to both, but I mean, I'm kind of used to and I'm also. Professional opinion that I I think I would prefer to see more an absolute number, you know, certain decibel levels than maybe have banned by standards.
You might want to make it. Different zoning standards as well, but a higher level of noise downtown than than, say, in residential.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable, I'm giving a standard in commercial zones versus residential, because if you're raising the expectation of, you know, quiet enjoyment of property in the residential zone, then if you're. If you're in C one, yeah.
I live in rural Washington County, and the. As far as agricultural noise, they can make as much noise as they want, any hours that they want, because it's primarily for it.
Yeah.
That's the purpose of agricultural areas. But, you know, my neighbor was riding two-stroke motorcycles right next to my house, and. I, my wife called me up and I said, well, just close the windows, she said, well, they are closed, I couldn't, I couldn't even hear her, and she was inside the house with the windows closed. So that wasn't agriculture purposes.
Right.
But, I mean. I don't know if if certain. Types of noises also are something that that would be classified.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point too, because you can have, I mean, certain qualities of different levels of noise, you know, very low frequency. Noises can be, even though they aren't typically loud, might be particularly bothersome or something because of the light, because you feel it, it's more of a vibration, or higher noise. Have a different. Different effect and are annoying for a different reason, so, yeah, I think definitely, I think there's a whole range of. Pitch and frequency and time of day and all kinds of.
I would get really, I'd get really involved.
Yes, yeah, and I don't think we want to get too overly involved, but I think it would be, it would be helpful just to have some more vintage standards. That that relate to these kind of fixed. Noise sources in the code that we don't currently have with the noise ordinance, that's in the news.
I've heard a lot of complaints from my neighbors about the. Lumber trucks. On Collins.
On Collins.
At, you know, they're out there at two o'clock in the morning, four o'clock in the morning, six o'clock in the morning, and well, over the. Decibel.
Right.
Limit.
Right.
But it seems like, I I was told once that there was nothing that could be done about it, but.
I think it's, yeah, I think it's, it's difficult, but yeah, it's it's to be used for public right of way, so it's more of a public safety issue, and, you know, the the. Vehicles, the trucks are properly tuned, or or they're not air braking, that type of thing, and I think also. I think specifically to that issue, with logging trips coming down Collins because County Road. And the, and the, and the timber conservation zone that that's serving, you know, the purpose of that timber, timber. Timber conservation zone is to preserve that as a viable industry in the community and in the county, and so there's a certain. Expect to be a certain tolerance for that as part of really, there's going to be that 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 logging activity, there's going to be. Trucks and noise associated with that, but. And we're, we didn't watch it, what what standards could possibly be imposed, but I think it's gonna be difficult to see.
I think if it, it could just be limited so that it wasn't in the middle of the night.
Yeah.
That people would be, would be happy, but but because the county, I guess it is because of the county road.
Yeah, and I think.
I don't know that there's anything that can be done.
Yeah, and I think we would probably. Might, we'd probably face difficulty, I think, if we tried to impose. Time of day. Standards on the the use of the timber operations, I think they're pretty wide open now, they can pretty much do what they want, when they want, they can, they can go up there and burn as long as they don't. Things occur, burning scrap wood and what have you, as long as it's not. You know, as long as the weather allows it, and there's not some other no burn order effect, so, I mean, there's a lot of stuff that they can do because of what they are. That I think that. I'm not sure, I'm not really sure we want to go there.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't realize we, that was County Road.
Yeah, it's the only County Road in the city.
Is that right?
There were others, but.
Can we get that? Down by Indian Trail, is there another access to the forest?
There's another access because you got down Schoolhouse and Indian, and Indian Trail, there's another access down here.
That's, is that County Road?
No, that's not a County Road.
I think I don't, and gave it off, like P U D's got a substation or something down there, if I'm.
Yes, there is, yeah, there is some, there's some, there's some high, there's power lines back in there and all kinds of stuff that. Like, we never really see the trucks coming out. It would be coming out here when we all see them, but definitely I won't find out that they come out there.
Um, on the parking, we never have enough parking. I don't think, well, let's put it this way, I would like to do an inventory of the A P A. Designated parking spaces to make sure that we have enough. Parking spaces, I recognize that not all of our parking lots are appro, you know, like, I would say that putting. Disabled parking in the. Bay Street Lot. I I would want to be taking somebody in a wheelchair either down to the harbor or up to one-on-one from there, but if we. But if we, if we could, you know, move those spaces either to one-on-one or down to the harbor so that, you know, I'd be looking at an aggregate test that we're in compliance with the ADA requirements for parking in the city.
So you're, you're, you're talking about city-owned lots?
City-owned lots. Um, can we do something about the private lots? Because I don't, I I doubt that the private lots are necessarily in compliance.
Yeah, and I think that the, the zoning ordinance, I think, has a as I recall, there's standards in the marketing chapters for providing handicap parking. And I think there's, there's also building code requirements as far as how many uh handicapped accessible spaces need to be provided for different types of uses based on square footage or how many units.
But but not all of them are marked or?
Yeah, and that's, I mean, that's a, and I think the marking of, from what I've seen, the marking of parking spaces is, is a problem, not just here in depot bay, but just all along the coast. And I imagine, I imagine it's probably a lot of it has to do with weather and the, and the markings got last. I may have to be replied all the time, but I, I, you know, definitely seeing that there's a lot of parking lots that don't seem to have any kind of markings.
And um last, lastly, in terms of parking, we have uh very different standards for vacation rentals depending upon where it is. And as we have added new ordinances, we have beefed up the requirements for parking for vacation rentals, but it's still um one parking space generally, other than in those specific areas. And so I would like to see that, I personally would like to see that looked at to see if we should be beefing up the uh the parking generally for.
For short-term rentals.
For short-term rentals.
Yeah, because I know in the, in the, I know in the, in the, the planned communities in depot hills and, and well watch, um, yeah, they definitely have a more restrictive standard. Um, there's, it's based on bedroom count, it's based, I think it's one per bedroom plus one additional space.
And that's what it is in the new townhouse regulation.
Yeah.
And in the coastal shores overly, I think it's two plus one extra space.
Right, yeah, so it's, it's greater than that, just one space per unit, so, yeah.
So it's bad sometimes.
I mean, and that's, that's likely, that, that's going to be.
That's going to generate some interest.
Yeah, and well, and it could be, you know, that's, that's likely to create, although it's not before, you're going to have a lot of existing um facilities that, that don't meet that requirement and you're going to have to figure out how to address that at some point.
But it will help in terms of future.
Yeah.
Of people either building new, new short-term rentals or wanting to convert.
Yeah, the other thing that we don't, related to short-term rentals, and I don't know whether maybe, maybe it fits into this whole flat issue as well, it, it, it's one of the standards again, in those, in those main communities, if they're um occupancy limits in the code. So again, you're limited to, I think it's two, two people per bedroom plus one person. This is the maximum occupancy that's allowed in the, in the tourist accommodations in those, in, in that, in that area. Um, I guess in that way you can kind of control, you can control how many people can be staying there. So particularly if you're dealing with like party houses and that type of thing, you've got some authority through the, the business licensing procedure to, to limit the number of occupants. Because as it stands right now, if someone comes in and applies for a business license and, and submits the unnecessary request to, to pay the lodging tax. And, and as, and as everyone allows it, it'll just be approved without any limits on the number of persons. You know, still have to provide, use the one apartment space, but other than that, there's no limit on how many people they can cram into a house or, or a unit. So I don't know if that's something that the commission wants to look at. If you're looking at tourist vacation rentals, looking at apartment, you might want to, they probably want to look at.
What do the, what do you other commissioners think about uh occupancy? Addressing occupancy in terms of short-term rentals?
I'm, I'm thinking more about the parking still. Um, what I've seen in other jurisdictions is like at the city level is like one parking space per bedder and they count street parking. Whatever's fronting the, the property is counted. Um, because I can see where, if you went more strict to that right now, there'd be a lot of properties, that are commercial properties in depot bay that, that, you know, would not be in compliance anymore.
Right.
Um.
I think you might want to, yeah, you want.
I think occupancy, that's, that's a good one. Isn't there already a maximum number of occupants allowed in a residential zone?
No.
Yeah.
No.
No, I thought, I thought there was.
No. Here, I've, uh, again, I've had experience in cities where, in, in, one of the first cities I worked for in California, where we had a neighbor, a particular neighbor in the community that was very, was full of very high-density apartments. Everything put up in the sixties and it was a relatively cheap place and people tended to overcrowd the um, the apartments in, in this one neighborhood. And the city tried to enact occupancy limits, but basically it was shut down by the courts because you, you, because it was essentially you were trying to define what a family is and how many people are allowed in a family or in a household. And it was found to be unconstitutional. So there's certain, there are certain public, I think there are certain health and safety limits that can be applied, but um when, when fire departments, department said, I'm not going to occupancy of the spaces, whatever it is in here. But it's the, 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 the public safety occupancy limits for are a lot higher than I think most people would accept. I mean, I, I remember that, I remember again, the city that I worked for, you know, one-bedroom apartment, you know, the city was trying to say you couldn't have more than like five people in a one-bedroom apartment or something like that. Um, but the, but the fire code, if they say you could have had eleven, eleven or twelve, because of a face on square footage and you could have, you could count the kitchen, you could count the bedders, you could have a living room, you had, you had so many square feet per person. And so you could have a huge number of people in a very small apartment and it would be fire code. So that, and that tends to be, from what I've seen, that tends to be the regulation that is enforceable and, and attached to, to limit the household size, particularly in either property that's owned or property that is rented long-term, um, is more difficult. I think you probably, probably more reasonable chance of being able to limit occupancy in short-term rentals, but.
Is there a, a fire code, like, that applies, you need to sprinkle it up to a certain, over a certain occupancy?
I don't off the top of my head, I imagine that there is. I think until in the county they have that, I'm not sure that we can down the gas. I, I have seen sprinkler pipes in places, though we'd expect to see sprinkler pipes in Tillman, but not down, not down here, I don't believe we do. At least, at least for dwellings, and it doesn't differentiate between short-term, it, it, you know, dwelling, the dwellings.
Are you talking about it's like rural town or are you talking?
Tillman County, like county by, I believe.
Because I've heard about rural properties needing sprinkler systems because it's not very accessible to a fire truck.
Yeah, or it's like too far away, too far away from the fire truck.
Right.
It could have something to do with that, but um it could, yeah, it could be, you know, the fire zone or whatever that it's in, or the fire department. You know, like what the insurance people tell them, that you need to sprinkle it just because you're twenty minutes from the fire truck. I don't believe.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what it is for.
Yeah, right. Okay. Any other, any other thoughts on topics?
Certainly, if you think of things in the future, we can add them to the list.
Yes, particularly if they are things that relate to public safety.
Also, if we can, also if we can think up in terms of public safety, whether it's stuff on, that might be included in the in the job description.
Thank you. Uh, are there any public comments or items not on tonight's agenda? Here in then, city council liaison report.
Oh, we had, we did, we had, we had another item on the.
We have a technical review.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
She wanted to get up.
I know.
Kit, thank you for preparing the document for discussion on third-party review of technical reports.
Thank you, yeah, so we obviously, the last meeting, there was a, a pretty robust discussion under commissioner concerns at the end of the meeting about this topic, so appreciate the, the commission gave directions to actually put this on the candidacy, could actually talk about it and make some decisions about what you want to do. So I should, I should recall, Commissioner Henry brought up the issue of peer review of technical reports, particularly geotechnical reports as part of planning review process. And so, um, he followed up with an email and sent to me, it was dated April seventeenth, it's attached to the report this evening. He kind of, he provided his assessment of some of the available options and the prospects that the city has in being able to uh retain the services of engineers qualified to provide the types of services that would be needed for a peer review. Give that client a candidate. Um, so if that's a, that might be a lead if we, if we end up going in that direction. Um, also included this evening's package, I, I just provided you a copy of the, of the proposal from AKS Engineering and Forestry, which is the firm that the city's just hired to be a city engineer um on a on-call basis. And my understanding from speaking with the city reporter that AKS either has staff um or has, or can retain the services of engineers who are qualified to provide peer review services. So that would be, we already have a contract with that firm and we might be able to retain those services through that rather than form conditions of retaining services from someone directly, strictly for that, that purpose. Um, but just to begin, as a bit of background, the submission of geologic hazard reports is a requirement in certain, there's certain types of applications. Anything in the coastal shorelands overlay zone requires a geologic hazard report. And it's also required in the so-called affected areas as defined in the code. And that includes um geologic hazards such as unstable soil, landslideing, high groundwater, uh, and also slopes that exceed twenty percent speedness. So whenever we have those types of conditions that are identified on a site uh or in inventory that's part of the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance, then we require applicants to prepare and submit a geologic hazard report as part of their review. Um, so as you know, um, when you've, when the staff has presented geotechnical reports were um, were basically looking at the, 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 the content, the list of content. So essentially the table of contents almost, and you're kind of checking off to make sure all the things that the code says to be topics that need to be addressed or being addressed. You know, that the document is no more than year old, that it's been signed by the right, um, by the, the, the engineers who are qualified to do so, um, that their stamps have not expired. I was looking at that. Um, but it doesn't get into, we don't, the commission doesn't get into um reviewing, the technical review of the assumptions of the methodology that underlie the, the report itself and the recommendations that come out of the report. So those are things that I think that a, a peer review could help to flesh out and could help to maybe provide more explanation and context for um, the planning commissioner when you're reviewing these types of, of process and all of these types of reports. Uh, you know, as I mentioned, I went for a couple of cities in Southern California, they're both coastal cities. They both had issues with coastal water erosion and with geologic hazards, landslides in particular. And in both those instances, the city had contracts with geologic, geotechnical firms um to do this type of peer review. Um, that would be, whether the, the engineer would review a report that was submitted, would offer comments back to the, or the, um, the firm or the engineer who prepared the original report, if there were any clarifications or corrections that needed to be made. And then once, once the, the city consultant was satisfied, then they would issue some kind of a letter, conditional approval um of that report that then would be used to provide, to present to the decision-making body. They would know that the report had been appropriately peer reviewed and, and generally would try if they, if, if it was possible, if it's for larger, more complex projects, we would try to have that, the city geologist, um, you know, attend meetings and be able to answer questions if there were, you know, questions about. So, um, I, I think that there's value in that, um, in having that type of review. I think it, it could help to address concerns that the commission has and that members of the community have about what's being analyzed and how it's being analyzed in geology reports. And so I, I, I think, you know, I agree with the suggestion that Commissioner Henry put forward that it, that that would be a good idea to, uh, to have this type of a process part of the, of the geo-review um process. Um, you know, the city already, currently, we're, we're, we're still, at least right now, we're operating our, our application fee system where there's a fixed fee and a deposit that's associated with all applications. So we are currently collecting the deposit um as part of geo-review applications against which we could bill charges that that would come from a geologist who would be doing, doing the third-party review. I mean, even if we own a way from a, a deposit-based fee system, which the city reporter has talked about doing, I think we can still require some type of deposit for this type of review, so that the applicants will be responsible for the cost back. But we would need to explore more detail with the, with the city engineer or any other firm that we might consult as far as what those costs would reasonably be, so that we have a sense of, you know, let people know how important it is to have this additional review done. Um, so, and I think because this would be a change in the city's past practice, um, that I would be appropriate to get the council to, to concur on this type of a change. So, um, if there's, um, if there's a desire or a part authority of the commission to do so, then it would be appropriate to have a, a recommendation from the commission to, to the city council to consider enacting this type of peer review for geotechnical, that is for the projects on the corner.
I got a question. Um, now, we're talking, I mean, ob- obviously, like, the geotechnical reports are the ones we probably see most often, you know, with, with, like, in the zones that we're talking about. But it, would this peer review thing potentially be, I mean, I guess it is, it's whatever we want it to be, but would that also include other types of technical reports that we could get, like, like, like traffic studies or other things like that? And would that even be necessary for some of those other ones? I, I know that the geotechnical stuff is, you know, it's a hard one, but.
Yeah, I, 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 I think that that would be, that would be appropriate. I think that the, we're kind of, I was focusing on the geo, the geo reports because that is the most common one that we've seen.
Yeah.
But certainly, if we do start seeing larger development projects, planning communities, uh, other, uh, larger subdivisions that are going to be subject to the traffic impact study requirement that's in the code right now.
Or like the civil stuff for, you know, the, all the infrastructure.
Yeah, so then it, it's appropriate to have, and certainly the city engineering we have is already going to be providing services in terms of reviewing civil plans for street improvements and everything. But certainly things like traffic studies, um, um, things like, I guess there's a property that's got a particular, if there's a property where there's, say, there's a wetland area that developers are actually proposing to build in and fill or alter. Uh, there's a whole process that needs to be gone through with that to make sure that's kind of appropriate and coordinating with our state lands and other agencies. So I think it would be helpful to have a peer review of those types of reports. So there are, uh, there was a project in Hamilton that had some kind of historic structure and there needed to, and there was a report prepared to be able to assess the value of a, of a structure or how, how it should be preserved or memorialized. That there could be value in having, um, the ability to retain services of a peer review of, for those types of technical studies.
I think, uh, for most of the ones you just talked about, um, but AKS does have the announced abilities to do that. I think it's just the geotechnical, they really don't. Um, I hope they're not thinking about me doing that, because I'm not lucky to do that work.
I agree, I agree, I agree.
And I'd be conflicted all the time.
Yes, exactly. I was just going to say, uh, it's, we, we need, we need you here on our commission as opposed to doing peer reviews.
But, um, I just wanted to add my, to back up my recommendation here is that, who do it? Um, I, there are other alternatives for peer reviews. Um, I actually talked with the city of Portland, who has several technical studios on staff, and they do intergovernmental agreements. Problem is, they're just horribly expensive and they really don't even visit the sites. So they're very much reliant on what the report says, that, you know. So I, I think it's important to have. So I, I think it's important to have a site observation, and the reason, I, I'll just suppose that I've, I've worked with Paul Karen for several years, and he did a lot of what they were, for real estate professionals, they would contact us and say there, there's a transaction, the, the property owner's concerned about a slope on their property, and, you know, could you come out and look at it, and you know, for, for very expensive, he would come out and look at things, and he's, he did hundreds of them, and of all the ones that he did, only, only one ever had a slope failure on it. And when I looked at his report, it actually predicted a failure. So, it's, to me, his record is, is unappeachable, is, you know, for the, the value versus the quality of services is something I think is unbelievable.
Yeah, I, you know, the, my experience that has this similar that we had, the, the geologists that we had on staff at both cities would do those types of site reviews, they would, they would come, they would have, like, one day, they would be in the office and make a schedule, go out to different sites and do the type of inspections that you talked about and be able to offer an opinion to folks about what individuals have.
Corrected my understanding is wrong, but as the, on the planning commission, we're not really able to do those kinds of site reviews, right? We're supposed to just judge it from what we are presented at the hearing.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's differences of opinion about that, but I think that any of you who, any of you who, who participated in the recent training, the planning commissioner training that we, that we had here, may recall that one of the speakers talked about, talking about expertly contact, and particularly, he recommended very strongly against commissioners ever going out to a project site, ever, under any circumstances, that, that commissioners should rely only on what's in the report that's presented to them, or, you know, any photographs or plans or whatever, what she's, you know, is feeling with the mission, never, should never go to a site because it was presented on expertly contact. I think that's pretty extreme personally.
I live out.
Yeah. I mean, you're familiar with the neighborhoods, and it's, I think it's, that's a, that's a basic strength. But there's, there's a balance there somewhere. And it's, you know, it's wanting to be glad to look at it, certainly glad to look at a site, but, you know, with the exception of perhaps to Mr. Embry, I think none of us are really qualified to offer an educated opinion on what the conditions, you know, what they see out there are, so.
I, I think if we do adopt a peer review, one of the very first things we should have them do is kind of go through what you went through as far as geologic hazards, I typically see that these ha- the list of, these are the hazards you need to address, including but not limited to, so that each one of the, of items in the list has to be responded to. And I, I think that would be very helpful.
Yeah. Yeah, I think if we, if we, depending on how, how this might move forward, you know, if whether AKS has the, the ability to do this, or whether, whether we identify someone else to do this, I think that you know, having part of that, having part of that RFQ, RFP process would be including the language in the code, and here's what the code says, you know, these reports need to include, and these are the issues that need to be addressed, and you know, and, and assess the, the ability of, of firms or individuals who are applying for that, you know, their ability to, to do all of those things, and I think, I think that that they're the ability of how, of the, of the possible peer, peer review person or firm to do to do site visits on a regular, some kind of a regular basis is, is very valuable, I think that's an important thing. But then it is, it's difficult here, because unless you find somebody who's local, they're going to have to drive them out from, from Sanlao or Eugene or Sherwood or and, Portland, yeah, so it could be challenging from a cost standpoint, people have a lot of travel, but I think, I think it's a I think it's worth, it's an idea that's at least worth putting out there and making the recommendations to the council and see what they think. Flesh out what some of the costs are likely to be. Get a response from the community, because, you know, I mean, it really is, it has been my experience, my professional experience in, in elsewhere, that this type of review always involved a peer review by someone who was under contract with the city, and reviewing these types of reports on the city's behalf, within the intent of writing a recommendation to the decision-making body as part of that, rather than rather than really having a bunch of laypeople reviewing technical studies and trying to determine if they were adequate or not, or able.
Do you need a motion?
We should have one.
Yeah, if, if there's, if there's anything.
Should be referred to city council as something that we would like to add to more procedures.
Yeah, we're going to motion to do that, and
so moved, what you just said, it sounded perfect.
Is there a second?
A second.
Two, Eric's just really eloquent. Any further discussion?
Go ahead, would you take the call? Sherman.
Aye.
Bossa.
Aye.
Embry.
Aye.
Sankey.
Aye.
Morland.
Aye.
Okay, great. I will work on putting something together, and we'll trade it into the council agenda maybe within the next month or so.
It would be, it would be great.
We'll probably file a slot on the, on their agenda.
And, and thank you and thank Jim for all the work that you've put into that.
So, I guess I have a, sorry, I laid to the party. I guess I have a question or a thought about that, is, I mean, it sounds reasonable, I think. And I don't know if it's a standard of an industry standard, I mean, that would be one question I had, is this an industry standard? And then what's the evidence to show? Is there any evidence to show that that extra expense produces, and work produces a better outcome?
I feel like to some extent it in, in assessment of risk or liability to this city, or for, I don't know, a bad decision or something like that, it would seem, it seems to me like it would provide a little bit of backup clout for, you know, whatever decision that, that, that Commission lands on for a particular project.
I think it would seem that way, it would be reasonable, but we're potentially talking about a fair amount of money.
Yeah.
And is, what's the evidence, is there any evidence to show that this is helpful in preventing?
It might be worth checking with the insurance carrier, the city's insurance carrier, to see if it might affect the insurance rates, might actually cause the insurance rates to go down, or if they have specific information on how helpful this is, because they would perhaps have access to a lot more data than, than even the state of Oregon would have.
Right, I think I've seen pretty good avoidance of problems in the city of Portland, and like, all the years that they've had geotechnical engineers on staff. When I first started practicing in Oregon, there were only a couple of geotechnical engineers on city staff, and now there's several of them. You know, they have a lot of concerns that are specific to urban environment, where if you're doing excavations in existing buildings and things like that, safety of those existing buildings. The coast has a unique set of problems, because it's the coast. The, a lot of the geology here is, there's a lot of places that have landslides. And I, that's why I think, starting with an engineering geologist is the way to go, because the geologists define what the problem is, they don't necessarily tell you what the solution is, but at least define the problem, so that's, that's most of the battle right there.
But if we're, if we're making that recommendation as a body to the city council, it would be I don't know how to word it best, but it seems like we would want to have some good reasons why we're recommending that. Not anecdotal necessarily, but.
The here, here's how I would explain that. I have a unique upbringing, from, in my younger years, I was outdoors a lot, and I encountered a lot of natural hazards, which led me to want to pursue protecting people from natural hazards. And that was something I vowed to do before I knew that that was an engineering obligation. And so it, it's protecting life and property is the primary obligation of engineers. And I think that, from my perspective, what I'm doing in Oregon, or in, in Portland protects property more than life. Most of our problems would, would be landslide problems, or fill-studling problems, or something of that sort. And those can damage structures, but nobody's in jeopardy. Now with the earthquakes and stuff, there's liquefaction, which can, if the ground is sloping, can cause lateral spreading, and I actually got sight recently in that area that the lateral spreading problem is supposed to be that it could have been life-threatening. And I think what I've seen here in deep open last twenty-five years is mostly property protection, but I also think some of what I've seen would protect life, which is why I think it's very important for us to do that.
I, I think we, I think we can certainly try to identify more to, to say that we can, we can try to identify a quantitative basis for performing in this direction, but, I mean, it's, I mean, I mean, it's probably going to be challenging, because it's, it's going to be difficult. It's going to be difficult to be able to quantify how, having this type of review in the past prevented something from happening, it's, it's how do you, how do you, how do you, how do you, how do you how do you quantify or place a value on something that never happened? I'd say that's not possible, but it's, it's
Well, I can, I can actually
Right, it's really an actuary.
Yes, that is what an actuary does, I can tell you that.
If you read my email, I talked about
Yes, I have. I am an actuary.
When I was a call that, when I got back to Oregon, was the quality of the earthwork. Every, seemed like every lot I worked on had ten feet of that, and all that, and I was told by my boss, we don't check the lots until the building houses, we just check the streets and utilities, that's all the work on. And in California, I thought, that's wrong, in California, we're trying to create lots that are livable, not lots that are extremely difficult and unlivable, and so after improving the standards in Washington County, it just trickled around into the rest of the Portland metro area. And if you talk to someone like some of the contractors that do underpinning work, you ask them, are you doing any underpinning work on homes that are less than twenty years old? And the answer is hardly any. They're all working on fifty-plus-year-old houses. So, and, and there's examples of, you know, the Rose Garden is an example of Portland, of a residential neighborhood that went bad. It was, there was lots of houses that got destroyed in landslide. The, the zoo was on landslide, there's, there's there's a lot of things that wouldn't have been done, you know, in present day, if we didn't have the rules in place that we have now. And, and I think, you know, it's I, I would, I kind of said when I came back to Portland that they were about fifteen to twenty years behind California, and I think that the coast is an equal distance behind Portland in those, in that regard. So I'm convinced that I have, you know, certainly helped protect people's biggest investment in life, which is their home. And if you can minimize the number of damaged homes, I think you've, you've done a lot.
I'm not against the concept, or I'm not against the concept, or maybe not for it either, I don't know, but I just think that if we're mounting an argument essentially, or a recommendation to the city council, we need to have some good language in it about why we think this is.
Right, I think the city council put me on this commission to do that. I mean, they seemed very interested in my engineering and geology experience. I mean, I'm just assuming that that's the reason why.
I mean, I, I mean, everybody raised their own immediate field set.
I, I got a unanimous vote at the city council, and they, I think they just looked at the resume and and said, yeah, this is somebody who could help us, and that's, that's why I'm
I mean, and maybe that's, or maybe that's our justification, saying that we have a geologist that recommends it, and, you know, I'm just trying to kind of bring up a procedural, what I think is a procedural issue.
Does the planning association have something that they consider best practices for peer reviews?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I can turn you to that.
Because there may, there may be something there that we could also draw upon.
Well, and I think at this point, I mean, you know, I think I've gotten a lot of feedback, we have a motion. We will make the most compelling argument that we can, that we can to the to the council, what about why we think that this is a would be a valuable addition to the process, but, yeah, I think that we're not, I think it's not the intent to try to make the development process more rigorous, it's simply, it's simply an intent of, of providing an additional level of a professional and technical review of these reports, so that the commission and the council can make better decisions when they're presented with this information in the future. They just have more information to, to work with when they, when they reckon their decision. As I said, we'll, we'll identify a date, hopefully in the next couple of months, and get this on the council agenda, and see if it makes sense at all, do?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you all. Any public comment? We lost our public. City Council Liaison Report. I only have one thing to bring up from last month, and that is when this council had its first hearing on the, first reading of the townhouse ordinance for which they were greatly appreciative of all the firework that the commission did, they made three changes. One was a minor wording change for clarification, just adding a few words. Second was to increase the width of the sidewalk from four feet to five feet to comply with the city's requirements. And the third was to increase the number of design features from two to three, and to create a menu of those, since they're not all of equal value, so it's like, you pick one for column A, one for column B, and one for column C. And with those changes, they accepted the first reading, and so Jim, would you like to report on the second reading, among other things?
Okay. I'll start by saying that, in hindsight, I should have taken your advice and answered, I'll get back to you on that. Because, is Beasley, Councilman Beasley? Asked me a question. That, could I, could I, I can't say it, right? It's not bringing up something that we're not, that's coming before us, or?
No, you're, you're, you're reporting on the, the, the council liaison, you're reporting on something that happened in the beginning.
He was talking about the Whatnot shop, and how someone had purchased it, and they've done a lot of work to it and improved it, and they put up a sign saying, go to business, and then were told it wasn't allowed in that zoning and outright permitted use. And so he asked me, would I be open to considering changing the zoning to make that permissible?
And so he asked me, would I be open to considering changing the zoning to make that permissible? And I answered.
And the zoning is not the, not the sign word, it's the zone.
The zone.
Okay.
And I answered yes. And then Kit.
After we recovered his head.
Pointed out, Kit pointed out that it's way easier to just approve a conditional use. Uh, rather than changing the zoning for one little piece of property. And I responded with, well, isn't it true that a big chunk of our light industrial has been doubled up by mini storage? Because I was thinking, you know, if we want to have a diverse group of businesses in Depot Bay, you know, and, and we're not allowing hardly any of these small businesses to have a light industrial use because all that land's been doubled up, right? Businesses that I, I'm not very fond of. Anyway, um, that's where that ended and, uh, I, I should have gotten back to her.
Or I say, Kit, would you like to respond?
Okay, well, that's my brother kind of dropped in.
Okay. So I'm talking about that.
That's what Beasley just kind of intended.
But I.
Asked kinds of questions.
But having been through this meeting tonight, I think the city should have come up with a new zoning for the wastewater treatment plant.
For that one little plot?
Yeah. So we didn't have to deliberate on every little building that they add to the wastewater treatment plant.
Right. It's a residential R1 wastewater treatment plant. So if we built a house on there, someone would have to stand, right?
We, we could add it as a very specific use.
So Kit may have been right on, on that, the whatnot shop, but I, but in, in hindsight, I think we've, things could have been done differently than, than what's really.
Um, would you like to tell us what happened to the, uh, townhouse regulation? Did they have the second reading?
I didn't hear.
Yes, they did. Yes, they did have that.
I was, I was gone for the meeting at that point.
Yeah, no, they, they had the, they had the second reading, um, and adopted the, the ordinance study and it's going with that kind of thing first. And I, or, yeah, the, the next day I, uh, I have to go, if you have to report back to DLCD once the ordinance has been adopted, they have to be notified within 20 days or something. The next day or, I went on data online for it, I went and I uploaded the copy of the ordinance and gave them all the information about the, the adoption date. So the state should be happy and, uh, and the ordinance.
Great.
Is it appropriate, comfortable question about the townhouse ordinance now that it'll almost soon be in effect? The, I mean, I, I'm under Commissioner, okay, someone's first.
Anything else from the, from the, uh, meeting for me? Okay. City Planner Report?
Uh, yes, so things are getting very, very busy. Um, I've got, as you can see, there's a lot of applications that came in in April and, um, today is what, the 10th? And my list for May is already this long and applications keep coming in. And a lot of them are going to be coming to you.
What does next month look like for us?
I, I don't have a, a firm sense at the moment, but I'm thinking at least a couple of public hearings. The, the, um, coming back to the discussion about exterior lighting standards, probably at least two public hearings, maybe more. Um, but I've got, you know, I've got several applications just in the last week. They're all coming to the planning commission at some time. So the next few months are busy. And we try to spread that out as much as we can so we don't overload anyone's agenda. But, uh, we're definitely gonna be having a lot of public hearings and some other new business titles as well coming forward in the next, next couple of months. Um, yeah, other than, other than that, um, and we have a preview, we'll report it out on what happened at the council meeting, um, in April. The, um, there was a, there was an issue with the, the sign permit that I issued for, um, the Kingfisher Pier, which is the business associated with the fragrance, um, toward the tower. And, um, so that sign permit actually got appealed, um, to, um, to the city council by, at my council correct. Um, that was on April 19th, which was the 15th day after I had approved the sign permit originally. And their concern was about, particularly about the sign that was on the harbor facing side of the tower. Um, but the applicants ultimately decided to remove that sign. And so the appeal was withdrawn for that. But that's done, the sign's gone and, uh, that deal is not coming anywhere. Um, other than that, I, I mentioned that I attended the, the spring meeting of coastal planners that was hosted by DLCD up in, um, Tolu, on the 27th. And that was a very valuable opportunity to network with other planners on the coastal and then more coastal area. And I just listed some of the, you know, a number of the topics that were discussed, um, at that, that meeting, some of which are but more or less relevant to what we do in there in Depot Bay. It was all, uh, very interesting and valuable opportunity to meet with folks, um, in our, in our coastal community. So, um, the DLCD does these, uh, twice a year, so there'll be another meeting in, um, they do, in the winter, they split it. They do a south coast and a north coast. Uh, and then in the fall, they do a single meeting and it'll be in Florence in sometime October. But it'd be same, the same type of format, just to kind of see what everybody, oh, there's a, there's a roundtable opportunity. They're all, everybody there gets to talk about issues. They're talking about the mayor community and give feedback from other planners about how they're dealing. So it's huge. So it's valuable and useful for activities for me to go to. So I enjoyed that. Um. Yeah, so that's, that is, that's it for last, for last month. Um, the, just even, even though it's actually technically in, in May, I can just let you know that the, that the, um, the appeal was for, of the commission's denial of the project on, on, on Sunday. And on May 2nd, and the council upheld, uh, the, denied the appeal and upheld the planning commission's action. So that, um, I, I've, uh, prepared the final order for that. The mayor signed it today and, uh, transmitted it to all the interested parties. So the, um, appeal, the 21-day appeal period to Nuba will end on May 31st. And, um, see what happens. My, uh, my expectation is that it will. So, um, but we will see what happens on 31st.
Did you have anything, Carl?
I don't. Thank you.
Uh, that's, uh, we agree.
Thank you. Any questions for Kit on his report? Planning Commission Concerns. Greg? Ruth? You have a question?
I do have a question. On the townhouse regulations that, uh, affected June 1st. So theoretically, I don't recall if there are any current, like, outstanding, uh, permits issued or, you know, projects going. I think maybe the, the hills of Depot Bay and/or the well watch thing, I, I believe there's some townhouse buildings going in, one or both of those. I don't recall, but I, I think there is. Cause I think they brought some of the architectural details, then we'll be, maybe, anyway, I guess my question would be, this is obviously not a retroactive thing, like, we're gonna, that would, so any permits issued after June 1st, this would apply, but any, like, if somebody came in on May 30th with an application for a townhouse that wasn't, that didn't any, I guess that wouldn't have, wouldn't matter because.
We, yeah, um, we didn't, the, the ordinance didn't include language that talked about anything other than the code going to us like 30 days after it was adopted. I, I guess, so it's, yeah, it's, it's an, it's an interesting question because if someone submits, if someone submits an application for a townhouse project on May 31st, are they gonna, are they subject to any regulations or aren't they? Because they submitted it before the 1st. And, um, you know, I would probably have to, I probably would have been consulting with the city attorney on that because there are different schools of thought about it. Is they, is the, is the cutoff date, the date that the, the, the application was filed? Is it the date that the application was being completed? Is it the date that the, that the, uh, the application was heard by as the first ever, the hearing? So depending on which of those dates applies, theoretically, something could get submitted like the day before and possibly not be subject. It is determined that it's, that it was submitted on the, the day before the regulations.
But they, they come in with a, that was part of their original plan developments.
Yeah, it's, yes, no, specifically with, with well watching Depot and, and Depot Hills. Yeah, both plan developments have townhome components. And there's nothing that they've submitted at the moment that's, that's, that would apply to either way. They have, they actually have, one of the things that, one of the applications that I just got in the last week, um, is for well watch. Um, as you may recall, in the, of course, of well watch, uh, there were two large lots where they were building 16 public family units. Basically, they're the apartments. Well, they did submit the building permit application to me last week for that 16 unit complex. Um, but those are not townhomes, they're flats. So it's not, it's not subject because, because of that. But if something does come in and.
I guess it's more of a broad question than just townhomes, but like, you know, in the future, if people may adopt something with an effective date of something, is that?
Yeah, in the city of Portland, anytime they have a rate increase, anytime they've got new rules, there's always a flurry of activity beginning before they are active. They're, they're technically due. I mean, we just went through one where we were doing the string time one day because they were trying to get in line with the wire.
Yeah.
So.
Yes.
Okay. So unless, and, yeah, unless you put, my experience in California was unless you put specific language in the ordinance that says that the, that the regulations will be applicable to, you know, projects that are, you know, deemed complete as of, you know, submitted and deemed complete, the processing as of the effective date. Then something, just submitting something the day before and the night before doesn't mean you're not gonna be subject to it. It's gotta be, you have to, you have to like vested, uh, your rights to move forward to a certain point before, you know.
Sure.
Yeah.
Usually in Portland, the, the date of an action is, is actually several months.
Yeah.
From when it's adopted. But, um, it's, uh, there is no way to do something retroactive or.
Yeah, no, it's very.
Anything that comes in at the time you're considering, it will, uh, that those rules would apply.
Yeah. Yeah, it's very difficult to do anything retroactive about that. And that's been, I mean, a, a, a whole kind of advertising schedule to make decision time that, that resting that have already happened. Okay. My question is answered. Thank you for bringing that up every time. Okay, I need to think about it.
You know, for, if, if no further comments, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight. Sounds like it'll be a longer meeting in June.
Guys, bring it on.